Super Hit 1049 W A X I Rockville Clinton.
Okay folks, I got four o'clock this gets started so we can get the heck out of here. Gotta keep turning that wheel.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for coming. We'll see how quickly we can get this moving along here. Don't have too much on the agenda today.
Jim, you might want to mention, and I didn't put it on the agenda, but you might want to mention that appointments are going to be...
February?
Yes. First meeting in February.
Yeah, I got a call today from Katie at your yesterday to see about the appointments. Say you could get them together if we needed them, but you've probably got a couple of things you're having to do in the office, I suspect, as first couple of weeks, so I thought that was sufficient. And these guys ask, well, I'll go in there, fine with that, so we're gonna push off the appointments to first meeting in February then. Gosh, you better have them in though, because we're watching you now.
I got some.
We're gonna be setting on you heavy now, lady, I just want you to know. Welcome, by the way, both of you have been elected office. I appreciate you being willing to step up and get us back on even keel, appreciate it.
It may take me a little bit.
Sure.
We got faith in you.
I'm sure. I'm sure there will be things you will find that...
I fixed the tracers office.
Yep. In fact, I told them a story about you, what these guys, while we were waiting for the meeting to start, you had talked about some fund that you were in account, and it was off six cents, I think you told me yesterday. I thought, well, that's pretty good, six cents, but you turned it around right then and you promised you were gonna find it. Okay, that's what you gotta have, so you did good. Hi there, Randy.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Did you get the message today?
Yeah.
About that room?
No, no, I'll text you tomorrow.
You know who he's talking about?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, good, okay, I appreciate it. Well, if it's okay, then I'll call him back and let him know he's gonna come down and work on it tomorrow. Okay, good, thanks. Okay, so we have minutes to approve from the December 19th meeting?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for the December 19th meeting. And there was...
Okay, go ahead.
There was also the one after that on the... Heard there was one on the 9th that we hadn't approved yet, correct?
Oh, I don't know about that, was there?
The executive meeting?
I thought we approved that last time.
Did we?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, he seconded then, so I'll second.
All fair say aye. Yeah, I think we did both exec.
I remember doing.
Yeah. All right, we have payroll amount of $181,216.56. It's kind of normal size.
I make a motion, we approve payroll amount $181,216.56.
I'll second.
All fair say aye. I did not make it to the end of the year council meeting. I didn't know if they had many in the way of adjustments to make at the end, but was there a lot of things that had to be changed? Will there be changes to anything for us?
Not that it will affect that.
Okay.
Not that it will affect that.
Okay.
The changes that were made were mostly just getting account numbers and such for the positive balance for the end of the year.
Okay.
So, and we got that taken care of.
Good, okay. How about the only one really concerned me, because that's actually our responsibility, the ARCA funds? Some things have been paid out of that, that couldn't be paid out of that, never supposed to go back in the general. That all get straightened out?
That's been taken care of.
Super, thank you. That's the only really concern me.
And the system has been fixed so that moving forward, that won't happen.
Good, okay.
Today's the third.
I missed Asbury, Mr. Asbury always took care of the calendar for us.
He did.
You think Nick would be doing that?
I was gonna say Nick.
Do they still use paper calendars?
Yeah.
I didn't know they made those anymore.
You kids, you know, you're up to stuff. All right. Have you seen one before?
I heard about one in a book somewhere.
History book, I guess?
Yeah. Of course, it was on the computer too.
2023, see, I did it right the first time. Okay, next, we need to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payable report in the amount of $130,002.28.
And I make a motion, we acknowledge the receipt of the payroll claims, the amount of $130,002.28.
Second?
All fair say aye.
Aye.
And then we have claims in amount of $967,858.38. Big ones this time, mid-year stuff, highway stuff, I suspect.
Beginning of the year stuff, contract stuff, those kinds of things.
Nothing important.
I've seen it before.
I make a motion, we acknowledge the claims, the amount $967,858.38.
All fair say aye.
Aye.
Now, we have this paper with the cleaning allowance, do we have to do anything with this for you guys?
Okay, so back in the olden days, those claims got turned in in December to be paid in January, but apparently at some point they quit doing that, and so now they're requesting hand type checks. So you will need to approve for me to cut hand type checks, because those are not utility bills. Those are actual dispersments to the deputies and reserve deputies for uniform maintenance.
Okay, now the copies we have, I'm not gonna read all these, but all these in a minute. You have, I'm assuming this is the same copy you have?
I have the originals.
Okay.
Oh, I should say, Mary Ann has the originals.
Then I would make the motion that we permit the out-of-cycle checks to be paid for the uniform cleaning allowance monies, total of $18,000 in the manner presented by the auditor's office.
And I'll second that.
All fair say aye.
Aye.
Jason, don't be coming in that office at eight o'clock tomorrow wanting those checks.
Eight thirty.
Ten o'clock.
Okay, deal.
See, we thought it was gonna get better, but it's gonna get testy. I can just tell it's gonna be testy.
Yeah, I'm glad it's here by.
Okay.
You got brown ones.
You're good at that.
What's your, what was your cat's name that was latched on to John the other day?
Uh, that was Charlemagne.
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 Okay. All right.
He was a little clingy. Then apparently Stephanie Dowd missed the deadline for accounts payables processing, and she's requesting three hand type checks for, that should have been in the accounts payables that you guys just approved, so these would also be out of cycle. I think there's one for $700 to her, there's one for $2680 to Hamilton Center, and another one for $2,000 to Park County probation.
Okay, now these are the things that we never see, but we have to approve, so I'm assuming that you know what they are and they're accurate, then in their request?
I am going to, all of those look valid to me. I mean, Stephanie gets paid out of that, Hamilton Center, obviously, yeah, so, you know, we're all getting back up to speed, but nothing looks out of order to me in there.
Okay, then I'm making the motion again that we approve these out-of-cycle, three out-of-cycle checks. One in the amount of $700 to Stephanie Dowd, LCC, the coordinator. One to Hamilton Center for $2,680 for training, and the third one?
To adult probation.
Yep, probation, once that meeting up for $2,000.
And I'll second that.
All fair say aye. All right, that'll be, those all caught up then. New business, Nick has something here for us. Apparently, Health Department submitted to us the forms for the new fees, if you recall, but these were incorrect on the paper that we approved, so we need to approve the new fee structure.
So your old one was ordinance number 2022-15?
So how do we state this?
Propose that to be dash 15 parentheses A.
Okay.
We're just amending, we're not redoing that.
Yeah, you're amending to adopt the fees correctly. The fees were just in error and the ordinance was adopted. The ordinance still was correct.
So we just need a motion to approve ordinance number 20, uh, 2022-15?
Dash A.
That'd be my motion.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
All fair say aye. Okay.
And they didn't advertise the prior one, so we're not duplicating or advertising, but that one have to get advertised.
Okay, all right. And then Nick?
You got copies to bring to us, or we'll have?
That's the only one I have, it's the one they have.
Be it then.
We'll make sure of copies everywhere.
You can email me a copy if you want, you don't have to paper copy me.
Was there a file kept for commissioners that has all of our minutes, all these papers every, from every meeting? Is there one in the office, any place to do that?
Um, they're always...
I knew there was, is there not? Do you already wear one? Because I don't keep all these things, man, I probably should have been.
You know, for any original ordinance, document, contract, all that stuff, those are kept permanently in the auditor's office as far as I'm aware. Those files, we usually put them in like a bank box, that's some of the stuff that's up in the attic that's waiting it all down. I don't know how far back they go. I know that during one of the, when we used to have record retention meetings and destroyed things, pretty much everything in those folders that, there's a lot of photocopies that don't need to be there, but if they were like seven years old or something, we got rid of a lot of those and only kept original documents.
Okay.
So, but I don't, I have, somebody's gotta get up there and see what's up there. Somebody's, and I couldn't even find this until three o'clock today, so...
We'll work on that stuff.
It's tough.
Minutes too, I have no idea how to access our minutes, does somebody?
Minutes are kept in the commissioner's minutes record, that is a permanent record in the county...
I know we sign it every year.
Yeah, the big books, those are permanent records, those are housed in the auditor's office, and they go back all the way to 1833.
Okay. We are looking at space to be able to move some of the stuff from upstairs, out of upstairs. That may be a couple of years down the road, but we're looking at doing that. So I just wondered where all these things were kept and how do we find all these things?
Right, I don't know, Jim, you would be on that as a member of that record retention committee. I don't know.
Yeah, we haven't met for years, as far as I know.
Okay, well, you've got a new clerk, and the new clerk is in charge of that, I mean, with the judge.
Yes.
So they probably need to...
Yeah, every year we hire the shredder truck to come, and that way we have our own shredder, so we can do that. We just have to approve what's going to be kept and what's not.
Well, some of that stuff has to be approved by the state too, so...
Yes, it does, yep.
I do have one old business when you get there.
Okay, well, I think, go ahead.
Okay, Park County Board of Commissioners meeting schedule that you adopted, the October meeting is incorrect. It should be October 17th, because Monday is county holiday.
Somebody called that, that's our Columbus Day, yeah.
It's the Park County Columbus Day, the special Columbus Day.
Because we are special.
That's right.
All right, we'll see that when we get closer to that. I did have one more old business thing, you had a couple of things here to take care of.
If you remember, our last meeting, Effie Moran Incorporated had a fire protection contract they were looking at for inspections to do, kind of laid out annual, semi-annual, annual sensitivity. We had tabled that so I could look at the old contract. I looked at the old contract, it doesn't have any warranties on anything. It just provided for services and installations and things like that. So the new contract allows for inspections, but if recall, we talked about it limits their liability for any error in inspecting up to $1,500. So that's the contract before you. As far as protecting you wise, the benefit to doing, I suppose, wouldn't be the $1,500. It would be that you've done your due diligence and you're not negligent, having your fire systems inspected. So if something were to happen, that would be something useful in defending a claim.
Yeah.
And you do have your regular insurance also.
So we're covered financially, but this just shows whoever's trying to get hurt in a fire, alarm didn't go off, whatever, we can show that's not our responsibility, we paid a service to take care of it.
Right, we had inspected, it was inspected this often, this is who did it, this is those documents. So that would help in defending a claim, I guess.
So you ready for us to approve that contract with Moran?
I don't have an original, it's not marked on, they gave out other copies. The only one I have, I've written notes all over, so what I propose is...
Did you keep yours by chance?
Somebody give you authority to sign, I don't remember if anybody...
They can send us another one?
It only requires one authorized signature, so, but yeah, I can email Matt and ask him to send us another one of these if you want. Matt Steckley was who was...
Yeah.
Matt handed it to us last.
Who's that with name?
Moran Incorporated Fire Protection.
That's the people that put the new fire investigation system in, and we changed the monitoring systems. It makes sense to have the ones who created the system put it in to monitor it, so...
Yeah, and so that's what this would do, but it would be, still be a benefit in my mind in case something were to happen, we can prove that we've had it inspected regularly.
You may check with Don if you think of it, like you need more things to do, but I don't recall the name of the other company that was monitoring it, the old system, but just to make sure they don't send a bill to get paid, because they told me all I had to do was send them an email saying that we weren't going to continue their service, which I did, and I have that copy of that email if we have to do that. So you may ask Don what the name of the company was, you may watch for a bill to come in from them, but they are no longer our monitoring system for the fire protection.
And I'll email old Matt at Core Facilities here in a second. Just ask him to send us an updated copy.
Yeah.
Are you, I'll have to get emails from you guys, or is the auditor email still working?
They'll still all work.
Okay, so I'll just tag the auditor email onto the email to Matt then. But I would just have you guys vote to give somebody authority to sign.
Can we get Dan the authority? He's gonna be out of town, but Chip's gonna be gone for the next month, so...
So it don't matter, you can do it if you're gonna be around close, it don't matter, maybe he'll be gone.
It just takes one signature.
Yeah, you'll be around, won't you?
Yeah, I'm not going.
I'd make the motion that we authorize, what's his name? Oh, yeah, Bruce, Bruce to sign the contract with Moran.
And I'll second that.
All fair say aye. There you go. Now, you got something else to do?
The other thing I have is we had voted previously to file on the bond for negligence or incompetence, or however you want to word it.
Just so you know what happened here, there was money that we were unable to retain. There was an error on the payroll, and so all the other people who had those errors have paid the money back that was owed. We had one individual who didn't, he no longer works for the county, so we really have no leverage other than asking him. It didn't happen, so we are approaching that money, that's what we're talking about, right?
Right, the insurance bond that was for the office. We actually filed on small claims, but they filed bankruptcy, so we can't collect off the individual, we're barred.
So all of our access to that, those monies is gone, and so we have to do our bond, but that's what we buy the bond for, it's why we have those things, so we just need authorized you to pursue that?
Well, you've done that, I need somebody with information to fill out this. I can't be the person that files the claim on the bond. It has to be an office holder, whether it's you, or John, or whoever.
I would have those numbers either.
The auditor office, auditor's office would have the information, but as far as who signs that, I don't know who you'd want to do that, whether it's one of you all, or one of the council.
Yeah, one of us can sign that, but...
So I just need somebody to come up with the information on how much the amount was and things like that.
Social Security number and all that.
Yeah, it has all kinds of personal things I don't have access to, but I can give this, I have it on my email also.
Okay.
I also provide it to the council by email, just so they have a copy.
Okay.
But I can give this to the auditors.
Well, I'm glad you thought of that, the last step for recovery of that fund, of those funds, because they are tax orders, they do need to come back, so that's...
That's really the only recourse we have.
And that's why we buy that section.
And we can't promise that's successful, that'd be up to the insurance company, but I mean...
At least we've done what we can do.
I did talk to their attorney, and he indicated that it does cover us in case of negligent, non-criminal action, because the form they send us sounds like it's criminal action, and that's not what we're seeking.
Okay.
He's out of Washington, so...
Anything else you got?
That's all I had. That information's the information I need to be able to proceed forward, and then either you or...
Yeah, when you get it together, we, well, why it's be consigned, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Let me see if I got the old business here. Nope, we're set, I think. I did check on the ARCA funds, because it's commissioner's responsibility to spend the ARCA funds, and there were some things that were spent out of that before that were in error. And that's those have been, that have been fixed, that's, monies backward need to be in, did not come out of the ARCA fund, so that's our only concern on that, and that's in good shape. Okay, departments then. Sheriff, you were here first, why are you at?
Thank you. I wrote a hurry thing, just wanted to... Sit hot seat for a minute.
How's your chief deputy working out okay? Is he gonna be all right?
He's all right. We switched offices over the weekend.
That's funny, I like it.
I got the bigger office now.
Okay. I make him do a lot of stuff, make him do busy, busy stuff.
Get him trained up, son, he knows what he's doing.
I'm sure I'll have a lot of questions for him, he'll be good help. But I don't have anything else.
I told him, well, he is here too, but I told him I remembered, he posted something. It's funny to see you guys all grow up, when I've known him all his lives, since he was a little kid. I remember him at the seventh grader sitting, I remember where they, all these kids always said, he's sat the last seat by the door, hoping beyond hope that you never ask him a question or call him for anything, you know? Don't make me know anything, do anything, tough to watch.
He was a little honorary, though, I think, too.
Yeah, there was, there were times, yeah, yeah. He's done well, he did a good job, and I'm counting on you just to do it well, as he did.
Thank you.
So I think we're in good hands, appreciate you.
Honorary kids make good police officers.
They, yep.
They know what they did.
You know all the tricks.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. All right, well, if there's anything you need from us, let us know.
All right, thanks, guys.
Be careful.
Yeah, that stuff, that's the ones we already opened up? Now we got to approve them?
Now you got to approve.
Yeah, okay.
Approve them and sign them.
Okay.
Got your hand all covered up?
Yeah.
You can get a stamp.
So does, when you guys open those, does Nick whip out a machete like?
No, he's got some little wimpy knife he uses, but it was all right.
His would be so dull, never cut you any.
Well, you must got a big one for Christmas.
Yeah, John Asbury, he blade this long.
I got a machete under my, if you can bring it out and just...
That's funny.
It's on my truck.
Expecting controversy area?
So there's stuff, what's on my truck?
Yeah.
Cleveland and I ruffle people's feathers occasionally.
Can't imagine that.
Read all my notes.
How to get along with the snow clearing with just one shift and blowing like it was blowing.
Doing all right, I reckon.
Great.
I didn't hear any complaints.
I had, I had no complaints from anybody on this one.
I didn't hear any.
Where you want one over there?
Sorry. Excuse me, yawning up there.
So we went through all these when Nick opened them, and you went through them, they were all verified, they were good. Now you've got them all listed.
Except for one, and that's a milestone in the, by two minutes. That was stuck, got paper clipped in another envelope.
Oh, really?
And I looked through there three or four times, and oh, well, they didn't bid. They did.
So what do we do about that?
We'll just accept them, let you sign them, and we'll put them on here.
Is that okay, Nick, to do it just that way, just to prove it? All right, so other than that, we just need to approve this as a package, because you already, you've already got them listed and stuff. So we're good to go.
You want to go over, ones accepted or not?
I don't have any reason to go through them.
I don't either, everything I've looked at looks good to me.
Every, everyone was accepted except for, I was gonna say, I was gonna ask you that, say by not accepting. Yeah. Coal Alliance wasn't accepted for liquid petroleum and series solutions. For oil and grease, Coal Alliance and Series Solutions wasn't accepted. All the gravel was accepted and the stone. Metal culverts didn't accept them, they were quite a bit higher, and St. Regis. They, there's not an escalator clause in that bid, but they wanted one, they're gonna check their prices every month. So I didn't accept.
Yeah, I guess not. Not much of a contract if you haven't, if you're, you're gonna tell us what the bills will be every month.
And last year, metal culverts, they went up considerably from their bid.
Okay.
Where the others held their bid.
Okay, well, that's the whole purpose of having the bid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But...
Okay.
You know, last year, they went up so far too.
So what is the one we need to approve to add to it? Hartland, is that what you said it was? No, no.
Milestone.
Milestone, yeah.
Twenty-three, one?
Yeah.
By two minutes materials?
That's your motion.
So it'll be milestone and asphalt materials, both that we approve?
Well, milestone's more than hot mix, and asphalt materials is cold mix, and our sealing oil.
Okay, so we just have to vote to accept their, accept their bid?
Asphalt for by two minutes, that's cold mix.
Yes, that's cold mix. Milestone's hot.
And twenty-three, one A.
Twenty-three, one B.
One B, yeah, twenty-three, one B. Would be milestone.
Yes.
That's the hot mix.
That's your motion to approve?
Yeah, with that change of adding milestone to two thirty-one B, I make a motion, we accept Randy's recommendations.
And I'll second that.
All fair say aye. Okay. All right. Did we get our, give me crossings?
Not yet.
Figured out, okay.
We hope he's gonna be able to come up in the morning.
Okay, great, okay. When's that due? Twenty-seventh, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seventh.
We'll get her, you'll get her.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What else you got for us?
Well, really, that's all I have.
Okay. Are we staff-wise?
I'm still down, but I do have some applications.
Okay.
Got one CDL, of course, three non-CDL.
Have you looked into an additional patching machine like we talked about?
Uh, have, yeah.
Okay. We have met with, talked with the council before about, we have crews going out all the time doing the patching, and it's, and it's tough, because it doesn't always get back down the hole like it needs to be, and because we know how much better job the patching machine does. And the general consensus, of course, they haven't approved anything, but general consensus was they would, they would probably lean more toward buying another patching machine and do with the patching machine than to send the number of guys out in trucks out, need to go and do it the other way. So I'd say let's pursue that and see if we can get that.
It's gonna take more time.
Yeah.
I mean, just doing the patching.
It will, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Well...
Well, thanks.
Do you guys wanna sign these?
Do we all three sign them?
Yeah. And all your needs to test them.
Okay, sit, have Bruce there first, and just pass them this way? You want chair?
No. We hope I didn't stand to do a sit and walk bit today.
I want you guys this one.
Okay.
Find it.
Somebody's page.
Number two.
Is there a second page on it or something?
Yeah.
Ah, I saw it there now.
Got it?
Yep.
Some of those lines are pretty small.
Yep.
Packages. Those are the ones that are already signed yet.
Okay. That's already signed, that's the one we missed.
Yes, we did.
See all the...
Last one? Always looking for that last one. Yeah. Yeah.
Hey.
How you doing?
You see that, everybody saw that, he hurt me.
I didn't saw nothing.
How's your manager?
I believe he's sitting at home letting Charlie keep him waited in the, uh, the plane.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, we don't want to fly us out of that plane, actually won't hurt you, so.
Yeah, all that's up.
Anything else Randy, is that what you got?
That's what I, all I had.
Alrighty.
You guys had something for me.
I'll let Chris know you're gonna get on that road tomorrow and that'd, that'd be good.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a great old road, I think.
Yeah, yeah, assuming.
Yeah.
Equipment works.
Close to got it fixed.
Did everybody sign what we're gonna do there at, uh? Yeah, what's his name's place where that, uh, pond goes across the road and?
Yeah, we're gonna probably try and ditch it.
Okay.
He said there's a very pipe in there, so we'll try and find that.
Okay, okay.
He says it's like water falls, like there's only one place.
Yeah, no, he knows what we're talking about though on that road. It's by Merrill, Merrill's old house.
He got a spring there and he's got a pond.
No, uh, Thompson.
Oh, Thompson.
Did you see where the canines are dying?
No. Huh.
Luke, Luke always went church with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he fasted.
Okay.
That's Jim's mail.
Uh, thanks, okay.
Some prideful stuff there.
Probably.
He's been fighting cancer for about six months.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, two weeks forty, dog, he's out running yesterday.
Huh.
So.
Yeah, mm, that's not too bad.
Alright, well, thanks Randy, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you guys.
Have a good week.
Uh-huh, you too.
Cindy, what, you got anything for us?
Yes, I just wanted to ask if, if you could decide on maybe a couple of dates that we could send to that Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development that will come down and talk about accepting policy for renewable energies as that educational piece.
How do they wanna do that, out of commissioners' meeting, or they wanna have something?
I don't think you wanna do it out of commissioners' meeting, cause it's, it, it's gonna be a longer meeting, it's gonna be informational session versus, uh, you know, an actual public meeting, but I think it's important.
What it's about is every place around us, um, some of them really big time stuff, the renewables. And we wanna make sure that we have policy, understanding of how to do policy when it comes along, and that's what this is all about. It's just, you need to do this and not do this, and, yeah, and, uh.
We still haven't come up with a moratorium that you recall signing.
Can't, haven't found anything on that, you recall that? We, we had a discussion because, uh, Montgomery County had a problem. And the, uh, any association of county commissioners recommend highly that we do a moratorium where they couldn't start those kind of processes without our approval. And we approved that, but there's no paper record of, can't find the paper record of that moratorium.
She reached out to me too, and I couldn't find anything on it either.
I remember.
I remember that conversation.
Yep. It was John Frye that sent the stuff to me from Montgomery County, I can.
Generally, a lot of times, unless I drafted, I usually previously wasn't getting copies of those things.
Yep.
All we have is that one document that Nicole found.
Well, it's not too late to do another, so.
No, it's not, I'm just saying.
You wanna draft something for us to, to approve?
Yeah, I can.
But what happened there in Montgomery, which we wanna prevent, is the company just came in and started doing stuff. They had no, had not been told they couldn't do stuff, and then when they got told that you can't, we're not doing the renewables, and they sued the county to get back the money that they had invested, and that's where the problem came from.
Yeah.
And it came down to where you shouldn't have made a lot of them to do that, but there was nothing in place saying that you can't go ahead and do that. Some, with some expectation of cooperation.
Yeah, I was just. I was gonna see if there's a date that perhaps some commissioner, some, some council can attend, because the other part of that discussion is gonna be the financial side of the economic development pieces.
And how soon do you wanna have that meeting?
I just told them we would do it after the first of the year, so I just wanted to give them a couple of dates. They will come here.
You guys have any special times that if we had a couple of dates presented to me?
Uh, up to right now.
Either February or March, probably. I'll be gone all of January, but be back in February. You want to shoot for February?
That's, that's fine.
Why don't you just pick a couple of dates that would work for you and make sure it's okay with them, and then shoot them out here and make, make sure we're okay with that date.
Okay. Is there a, I mean, we didn't really talk specifically time of day, is there a time of day that?
Any, any is fine with me, but I don't, Dan's tied up during most days, though.
I prefer early morning or evening.
Okay.
Maybe come from Indy?
Yeah.
So probably early morning probably wouldn't work, the evening might.
No, I'll just go ahead and lay if it's early morning, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
Is there, are there any dates in February specifically to stay away from? That you know of right now?
Let me see what I got. Only thing I know it's a problem for us, our regular meeting, council meeting on the ninth and, uh, and our meetings in the afternoon. Other than that, any ought to be okay.
Okay.
February fifteenth, I have a morning, early morning meeting, but it won't last past ten o'clock probably.
Okay.
Other than that, it's pretty open.
Alright, I will, I will see if there's a date in February that makes sense, you know?
Great.
Come down and have that, and, and again, we can just do it as a public informational meeting, but we definitely wanna make sure that.
Sure.
We have our presentation from both of those groups here, so they can hear that message and.
It's large enough for them to have it? This work?
I would think so, I mean, I don't think we need it to be an overly large.
I don't know how many they bring with their presentation, just a couple of them?
Usually two or three people.
Okay.
Um, that they're doing it, and of course, Nick is, is welcome if his schedule allows.
Okay.
I mean, they do recommend that if you start entering an agreement with a company that you have, you have a legal representation that has pretty in-depth knowledge of those types of programs, cause they can get a little tricky.
And they try to get tricky, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, sounds good, give us the date shot and we'll give you a thumbs up quickly as we can.
Alright, do that, and just, um, I wanna make sure you saw the email that we had to postpone tomorrow's meeting.
I have not seen that.
There will not be a Teams call for you.
Okay. Okay.
A person that's in here from has COVID, so.
Really?
I have to postpone.
Okay, well, that make it easier, cause we're leaving in the morning early, and we were gonna stop, rest area or someplace and have the meeting and then go on. But I don't have to do that now.
That's why I wanted to make sure you.
Great, appreciate that, great.
Just keep growing.
Where are we going?
Florida.
What part?
Oh, actually, it's not very far south, it's Clearwater, we usually went farther south, but Hurricane. Really?
Yes.
We're going to a K O A at, at Tarkin Springs, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I know where that's at.
Nice, nice place, nice area?
I know where Tarkin Springs at.
Okay.
Cause I was in northern Clearwater, which the next town is Tarkin.
The important question is how far from a beach are we?
Clearwater Beach is where you wanna go.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the Bywood.
Okay, I like it.
There's a real nice restaurant bar at Anna Marie Island Beach too.
Somebody said that on Anna Marie Island, there is a breakfast place on the beach with all the pancakes you can eat, so that's my kinda talk. So, now, now we'll be in good shape. Alright, so I won't be here for next, the next meeting, but you guys have, don't leave me, see other stuff. Okay? Well, we probably need to elect officers, since it's first meeting in January, I won't be your second meeting, if anybody interested in taking this. It's a lot of, there's a lot of glory and power to passing up here.
I'd make a motion if you need friends as is. I'll second Bruce.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All fair, say aye?
Alright.
Okay. I was afraid I was gonna lose my, lose my job.
Yes.
You have to die, everybody says.
Yeah, I guess, I know. I can feel it.
Can I get a motion for adjourned?
I make a motion with adjourned, it's back here.